Come on in. Hi, who's seats up front here. Come on up front.
I'll find them. Okay, thank you, I'll talk to you later.
Someone please rise and pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please follow the order. Item number four.
I make the motion to recess the commissioners meeting, I think it's Hall or Warren meeting. I'll second that.
Question by Commissioner Warren, sent by Commissioner Howard, to approve the recessed the commissioners meeting and open the salary board. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Question item number three.
I make a motion to approve the salary board meetings from, or meeting minutes from March 9, 2016.
Second.
Question by Commissioner Warren, sent by Treasurer Miller, to approve the minutes of the March 9, 2016 salary board. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So Carrie, item number four.
I make a motion to create a temporary full-time non-union position of sheriff's deputy, at $11 an hour, 40 hours a week, benefits according to government mandated requirements, effective March 23, 2016, for the recommendation of Sheriff Nancy Nigga.
I'll second that, but I'd like to add that the position will be eliminated after 90 days. Make that change.
Are you okay with that, Jean?
I'm fine with that. Are you okay with that, please?
I am.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Arnold, sent by Commissioner Warren, to approve item four on the agenda, create a temporary full-time non-union position in sheriff's office, $11 per hour, for a maximum of 90 days. Questions or comments? Yes.
Why is it only 90 days?
Couple issues. Right now he's got some people leaving, we're trying to get another person in here, most likely this person will transfer from a part-time position to full-time position, he's got some turnover, but the other issue is for the renovation project going on this summer, he's probably gonna need another person on the doorway, so that will take care of us through the construction part.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Can you say more about the renovation project? What is that?
Renovation of the courthouse would be an addition on the side of the building, the second floor in the historical area. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, public comment on the salary board. Point number five.
I'll make a motion, we close the salary board meeting.
Question.
Second.
Question by Treasurer Miller, sent by Commissioner Warren, to approve item five, close the salary board meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'll send the commissioners meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the March 9, 2016 commission meeting.
I'll second that.
Question by Commissioner Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item five on the agenda, approve the minutes of the March 9, 2016 meeting, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item six.
Make a motion to ratify or approve the cash dispersments and EFTPS payments on your agenda.
I'll second that.
Question by Commissioner Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item six on the agenda, approve the cash dispersments, electronic payments, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Seven.
I make a motion to ratify or approve the following seminar requests that are listed on your agenda, please.
I'll second that.
Question by Commissioner Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item seven on the agenda, approve the seminar request, number of payments for seminar requests, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number eight is listed on your agenda.
I'll second that.
Question by Commissioner Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item eight on the agenda, to ratify, accept, regret, the resignation of Christina Schofer in jail per the Board and March, questions or comments? Yes.
What is her position?
She was a corrections officer. All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number 10 is listed on your agenda. Oh, wait a minute, I guess we're doing nine already. Nine, sorry, with Timothy Ransome.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item nine on the agenda, to accept or regret the resignation of Timothy Ransome of 911, for her, questions or comments?
How long was he employed, did you say?
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number 10 is listed on your agenda.
I'll second that.
Question by Commissioner Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item 10 on the agenda, to acknowledge or regret the resignation of John Fulton from Sheriff's Department, effective March 24, for the recommendation of Sheriff Florence, questions or comments?
And what's his position?
He's a sheriff deputy.
Deputy.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number 11 is listed on your agenda.
I'll second that.
Question by Commissioner Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold, to ratify and the transfer of Ariel Hillard, Tom Cannon, and part-time correction officer to open full-time position of corrections officer, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number 12 is listed on our agenda.
I'll second that.
Question by Commissioner Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item 12 on the agenda, acknowledge the transfer of Brittany Hartman from Second Deputy Clerk of Courts to full-time union position of probation collections compliance officer, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number 13 is listed on your agenda, agenda regarding Act 13 funding.
I'll second that.
Question by Commissioner Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item 13 on his, the agenda established date for 2016 only utilization of Act 13 funding for $10,000 grant for Susquehanna County volunteer fire and ambulance services, questions or comments? Yes.
And when you say Susquehanna County, what does that mean? The whole county you're giving the money to?
Yes.
So it's being dispersed to different volunteer, different fire companies and all that?
Different fire companies, yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Item 14.
Make a motion to approve item number 14 is listed on your agenda until the first day.
I'll second that.
Question by Commissioner Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item 14 on the agenda, to sign the print management agreement and purchase agreement with Eastern Management Print, amount of $6,764 for probation officer. This is for a copier, printer copier. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye. Make a motion to approve item number 15 is listed on your agenda.
I'll second that.
Question by Commissioner Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item 15 on the agenda, to sign the print management agreement with Eastern Management Print Network in Endicott, amount of $6,764 for district attorney's office, give the same thing. All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion, number 16, to rescind the March 9, 2016 motion regarding the lease between Susquehanna County and Susquehanna County interface with 43 Public Avenue property.
I'll second that.
Question by Commissioner Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item 16 on the agenda, to rescind the March 9, 2016 motion in regards to lease signed between Susquehanna County, and, questions or comments? Yes.
Can you give some background on that, and what, why, how come?
What we're trying to do is get some additional space right now, so we can move some things during the renovation project, and we were gonna go into that facility, unfortunately they were not able to take and get a lease together for us, and so that's why we moved to 17, which is actually a little bit cheaper and probably a little bit better.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number 17 is listed on our agenda.
I'll second that.
Question by Commissioner Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold, to approve a lease between Susquehanna County First National Bank, property at 281 Church Street, Montrose, for six months, a monthly cost of $12.84, plus electric, for the monthly rental leases needed for additional months. Questions or comments? Yes.
And what are you renting there? Is it a particular floor?
It's office space.
Just office space? We're on the second floor, or where would that be?
It's all on the first floor.
First floor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to adopt proclamation 2016-03 for claiming national public safety telecommunication week, April 10th to 16th, 2016.
I'll second that.
Question by Commissioner Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item 18 on the agenda, to adopt the proclamation 2016-03 for national public safety telecommunication week, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number 19 is listed on our agenda.
I'll second that.
Question by Commissioner Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item 19 on the agenda, to adopt proclamation 2016-04 for claiming April as environmental awareness month, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number 20 is listed on our agenda.
I'll second that.
Yeah, motion by Commissioner Warren, sent by Commissioner Arnold, to approve item 20 on the agenda, proclamation 2016-05, April as a child abuse prevention month, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, this time we have a presentation for the Suicide Awareness Initiative.
Before we begin the presentation, I just want to say quickly, I want to thank former Commissioner Jane Bracco and Commissioner Hall. When I came to them regarding this initiative, they were more than happy to start this process. I want to thank everybody that worked on this over the six months, for their input, their recommendations. I have to say, this committee was probably the most productive committee I've ever, ever worked with in getting something done, finding recommendations in six months. I have to applaud everyone that served, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Warren. Good morning, everyone. My name is Rosemary Barodrick, and I am representing the advocacy alliance of the American Association of Servants, serving in the capacity of facilitator of the Suicide Awareness Initiative. And with my support here, we're gonna flip through some slides. The Suicide Awareness Initiative was established by resolution approved by the Board of Commissioners last September 2015, and so we'd like to acknowledge all the commissioners and thank them for their support and acknowledging the importance of this public health concern. Particularly Commissioner Marion Warren, whose foresight and vision really led to the establishment of this committee, and Mr. Jeremy Yel, who I believe everyone knows, who is the administrator of the La Juana-Susquehanna Behavioral Health Intentional Disabilities and Early Intervention Program, but he's here today in his capacity as the leader of the Behavioral Health Front. Thank you, Jeremy. So, the mission and purpose of the initiative was to really bring together representatives of the private and public sector to discuss the issue of suicide prevention in Susquehanna County. As you all recall, back in 2013, there was a spike in the number of suicides among very young, aged from 15 to 24-year-olds, and that was the impetus for bringing this group together, to really zoom in on that population group, to study suicide prevention intervention and post-intervention services that are available in Susquehanna County. There were a number of participants, the Board of Commissioners appointed 15 people to serve on the committee, but there were also many other stakeholders in the community who gladly offered their time and volunteered six months of their time, if you will, attending these meetings and doing work in between sessions, and so we'd like to acknowledge them, and several of them are with us today. Karen Voight, who is the superintendent of Mountain View School District, Shane Bisneski in the back here, is the very youngest member of our committee, he's our student representative, Jeremy, Southern County, South Centually from Skidwick Counseling Center, Kimberly Tuttle from, she's with the first emergency responders, and Mary Wetterall spoke to our group in December, let's see who else is here, Michelle Graziano, who served on the committee, the sheriff, Mike Zimmerman, who is the CEO of Family Services, and Commissioner Warren, and also Commissioner Arnold, who attended several of our meetings, so thank you so much. But you'll see, we had educators, school superintendents, who are either actively involved in our meetings, or participated via the follow-up telephone calls, email messages, laying in on some of the issues, clergy, faith-based representatives, next, government, as I've mentioned, the foreigner was involved, the DEA, the sheriff, the deputy sheriff, and I have to tell you, they were very focused and engaged, and Beau Hovin from the Drug and Alcohol Commission, a number of behavioral health and human service leaders, the hospital leadership, we actually had folks from Harrisburg come up to address our group, there's a federally-funded state initiative that we felt was important to introduce to our stakeholders, next, the business community, parent, grassroots advocates, student representation, emergency first responders, and the media, next. So, our objectives included assessing what's out there. You know, we learned a lot about what services are currently in place, we considered what was happening on the national and state level, and we identified some innovative evidence-based programs and best practices that we thought might be of interest to providers in the county. Also, we looked at how can we promote measures to support and facilitate prevention, and to seek out initiatives that offer potential, embrace potential, that address the risk factors, and again, targeting a youth group. We also talked about identifying untapped resources, and I'll tell you a little bit more about that in a few minutes. So, the process was a six-month process, everyone who came together back in September, October, was asked to attend six meetings and to spend some time reviewing information. The first two sessions were focused on fact-finding and information gathering, that's how we invited folks into our meetings, and for 15-minute presentations on facts directly related to this particular targeted group. After the second, the third month, third and fourth months, we kind of closed the door behind us and said, based on everything that we've learned, what do we think are the strengths of what currently exists, what's currently in place in this county for youth groups? We took a look at areas that require some improvement, and we looked at opportunities for new developments, and then we also discussed the threats, the threats, including the budget impacts, right, Michelle? Supply and demand issues, and so on. And then, in the final two months, we broke our group down into working teams, and they identified some specific compelling strategies and tactics for action that would help advance the agenda that we set for this. And then the final meeting was a compilation of what was recommended by the three work teams, as well as some formal recommendations and observations that I made as the, as the group facilitator. And that report is in your notes as we speak. Again, this is just an overview of what transpired, next. And so the recommendations are really focused on several areas. First, awareness, that was the top priority. What we've learned through this process is that there are actual stakeholders participating in our meetings who were not aware of some of the services that are currently in place. A good example is the 211 helpline. That helpline was brought into this county by the partnership of the county commissioners and United Way of Susquehanna County, and basically, it's a service that's available 24/7 for people who are looking for information. So you call that line, and if you're in a crisis node, this service will direct you to the appropriate crisis intervention program. So it's a, it's a great program, and what we've determined, right, Sheriff, that there's a great opportunity to expand the awareness level in the county about this particular service and other services. Access became a major focus area, folks who are economically challenged, who do not have access to transportation, who may be rurally isolated. Advocacy, we had grassroots advocates involved in this process, and one thing that kept coming up was, what happens to kids once they graduate from high school? You know, the school system, and I have to commend the schools, because they are highly engaged in this, in this effort, but what happens when you graduate from high school? If you're not employed, or if you're not enrolled in college, if you're not tied to a formal system of support, are they slipping through the cracks? How do we reach them? And so there was much discussion about the need for community centers, for, for people to engage outside of work, outside of school, if you will. Applications, that, that relates to evidence-based models and best practices, and again, our, our mission was not about reinventing the wheel, our mission was to learn about what's out there, what's working, what's not working, what are the unmet needs? And, and so, we reached out to folks who have programs and services in place, and I'd just like to comment about Dr. Perry Rosen, who was with the Garrett Lee Smith Suicide Prevention Program, which is a federally-funded state initiative, and they work with school districts across the Commonwealth, they work with clinics across the Commonwealth, and Dr. Rosen and her colleague presented at one of our meetings, and produced a screening tool that can be used in healthcare settings, can be used in school settings, and so, these are resources that are readily available to schools, readily available to other providers. And then the next piece is accountability and sustainability. You know, accountability, what happens? We make recommendations, who's gonna be held accountable for implementing these recommendations? And then secondly, what about the long-term sustainability of this effort? There were certain members of the group who said, okay, this is great, Rose, but what happens when we conclude our work and the report is filed? Who's going to assume stewardship of this, of this plan? So we'll talk a little bit about that. So, priorities, promote community awareness, first and foremost. Secondly, build community and organizational capacity, and what I mean by this is encouraging cross-sector and cross-organizational cooperation and collaboration. Rather than to work in silos, open up those communication channels, work together, share resources, help each other out, use evidence-based screening tools that are readily available that have been proven, are, and are used as a best practice. Support long-term sustainable efforts, there is a systems of care committee in place in the county, and this, this group is made up of professionals who represent both government and the private sector, and they come together on a regular basis to compare notes, to introduce new services and programs, and we believe that this is the group that may be best suited to provide the stewardship of the plan. So, we're encouraging the county commissioners to, to give this serious consideration. And we also believe a priority is to support and expand school-based and student-driven initiatives. Again, I can't say enough about how engaged the schools are, I mean, it's just quite impressive. Next. So these are the specific recommendations made by the work teams. So, promoting 211 helpline, and by the way, you should know that there's also a 211 team line, and a texting opportunity, because a lot of kids don't use the phone, they just don't use the phone, they text. So we need to adapt, to continually respond to the changing needs. Again, expanding awareness, knowledge of current services, access, and to embrace diversity. More integrated approach, Beau Hovin, who many of you probably know as the director of the Drug and Alcohol Commission, and Beau talks about a system of recovery, and rather than a one-time episodic connection, this is an ongoing process, and I think much of what Beau does with the county, Susquehanna and La Juana, can be carried over into this, this arena. So, we want to support, these are other considerations, support family and community. Again, for your information, there's a grassroots effort underway involving the school districts and parents and community leaders who are trying to establish a sports center, property that is available in this county, and the sports center may or may not be expanded to include a more comprehensive approach to addressing community needs. It's not just sports, it's not just physical health, but hopefully, we'll be able to do some work with them to expand it to a community center, whereby some of the support services related to what I'm talking about can be accessed through that, that center. Healthcare, behavioral health services, there are some great programs in place, I don't know how many of you know this, but Mary has a program that's established in a school setting, and there are very good outcomes. They've made quite an impact, there's plans for further expansion of that effort, not only in schools, but in healthcare settings as well, and we'd like to think that we, we sort of encouraged additional dialogue along these lines. Philanthropy, when we talk about sustainability, I want to address the issue of philanthropy, and so, recommendation is made to establish an endowment fund with one of the two foundations that exist in this county. We've already talked to one person who, it's actually a corporation, that has indicated they would be interested in entertaining the idea of making a gift to launch this endowment fund. The point of the endowment fund, and we're talking about starting with $25,000, the net income earned off that fund can be used to support small projects like a student-driven slogan contest, or gun safety education, or something like that, in the near term. In the long term, hopefully this endowment fund will grow through memorial gifts and bequests, and we can do bigger, more substantial projects with the funds. Next. And the final piece of this is that, and I, it's good news, because we were able to find some resources, albeit limited resources, but enough to, to support a part-time person to come in and staff the Systems of Care Committee, to ensure that these recommendations are implemented over the next 12 to 18 months. Two, facilitate awareness, help coordinate a community campaign, support the school-based efforts, again, being, being a liaison between schools and the Garrett Lee Smith Program to, to ensure that these resources are brought to the local level, work with the Systems of Care Committee, and foster the development of other recommendations which were put forth by the SAI Committee. So, the written recommendations, which are in greater detail, it's a 10-page, 11-page report, around your desk, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have, as you read through the document, I will be available, and I'm sure Jeremy would be happy to, to address the group, and I'm not sure if I acknowledged Sally back in the room, but I wanted to be sure that everyone on the committee is recognized and thanked for their time and commitment, and I have to say, it was a great experience for me personally and professionally, and I was quite impressed. You've got, you've got people who are really, I don't have to tell you, they're the salt of your, done tremendous job, so, my pleasure. Thank you.
And thank you for everyone that was on the committee and the hard work you did. This is, you know, should be a high priority in our county, as well as in the state, and your services to try and bring this to light and trying to make a difference, especially in this county, is well appreciated, and we look forward to hopefully seeing some good results come from this. So again, thank you all for your, your hard work and your endeavors.
Are you going to entertain any questions from the audience on this?
Yeah, we can do it under public comments, so we will start in the public comments, so if you've got a question, Bruce?
Yeah, should I address it to the chair, or to the, I forgot?
It's on mission, address the lady.
Rose, Rosemary.
I commend everything you did. I, I have a couple of questions. Did you reach out to the teachers?
We reached out to the superintendents who sent representatives to the meetings.
And, and guidance counselors?
Yes, we reached out to the guidance counselors.
And are they part of the active group who's going to be doing the research, the homework, the grunt work?
We're hoping that the superintendents will take the lead on that and encourage the guidance counselors to actively engage, yes. We actually had our student representatives do a little research involving the guidance counselors.
The reason I'm asking that is because teachers see the kids six and a half hours a day, and as someone who has intimate knowledge of being involved with this, they should be the first people you should be reaching out to, because the troubled kid may not go to another kid, but an aware teacher will realize that he's troubled.
Well, there, I don't know if you're aware of this, but there's some mandated training that has to occur in school settings to prepare everyone to deal with the risk factors and be in a position to...
be in a position to respond to students who are at risk. And I guess all the teachers, right, Jeremy?
Yeah, under Act 71.
Seventy-one.
It was passed, legislation that passed a year or two ago, and is now in effect, teachers are required under state mandate to receive training on a every-two-year basis.
Were you a teacher?
I was.
Okay, well, usually mandates are presented in a teacher's faculty conference or a half-day session, and most of the time, teachers can't wait to get out to go to lunch. What I'm talking about is reaching out to them. So, when they see something, they don't know to go to either one of you or who else is involved in this project. Unless they're solicited and unless they care, this is just one other directive that's being, you know, pushed to them on a piece of paper. The second, and that's not a criticism, I'm just saying, please involve the.
Emphasizing the importance of that.
The second thing I would like to note, and unless there's a reason, this is a very important conference presentation. I note the lack of the press here.
Can I comment on that as well? I don't know about the local newspaper, but I do know that the Scranton Times is already committed to doing a comprehensive coverage of what has happened, and they're going to report on the findings.
Must be, Bruce, there was something else big going on in the county.
How many years have we come and we haven't had at least two reporters here?
And the other thing is that Sandy Robb was a member of the committee, and unfortunately, she broke both wrists.
Well, that's.
She's got a reason not to be here.
Was she roller skating and fell?
I don't know.
She fell down and broke both wrists, yeah. So, she's a hiking with one finger.
So, thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't know where she's due.
Vera?
I'd just like to get your name again. Is it Rosemary, you said? Rosemary what?
Barodrick.
Okay, and you're with who?
The Advocacy Alliance.
And you're in our county?
I'm in Lackawanna County.
Lackawanna?
We're in Lackawanna and Susquehanna, multiple counties.
Okay, so you reside in Lackawanna County. I'd like to know, what would be the spike that was mentioned in 2013, when this, that was mentioned between the 15 to 24-year-old age? There was a spike in that year, so does anybody have stats on that?
Seven, I believe.
You had seven that year, seven suicides in our county? And how was the year before, when you're saying there's?
Less, four the year before. And the subsequent year, it dropped down to zero, and that is really the goal, zero suicide.
So, the subsequent year, which is 2014, we had zero?
Zero, and then in 2015, that number was three.
So, went back up in 2015, we had three. So, you're basically focusing just on that age group? Because we also have suicides, of course, increasing on the other age groups.
Absolutely, and much of what we uncovered is applicable to a broader audience.
So, one of your goals is, from what I could understand, a sports center, a community center, besides having other services that people can connect with? So, since I moved here 25 years ago, remember, we were talking about community centers for the children and young adults and sports centers. That was 25 years ago. It still hasn't happened.
Right.
So, you're envisioning that it'll happen now at this point?
Well, based on what I've uncovered, and I believe, Karen, you can address this, all of the school superintendents were asked to participate in a discussion that has pretty much taken off. They have architectural renderings, schematics, they have already started fundraising, and there is a large foundation that has expressed a willingness to sit down with the group to talk about providing funding sources.
And then when you mentioned the foundations and corporation that was interested in giving a gift, can you mention the name of the corporation?
Not at this time. I will tell you it's a bank.
It's a bank? Okay.
Any other public comment?
On this issue or?
On this issue or anything?
No, we're not in regular public comment.
I have a question.
Okay.
Have you heard anything about Syrian refugees being placed in Susquehanna County?
I have not heard anything about that.
And I ask because we know that some have been placed in Vestal. So, I would ask the commissioners to please be aware.
Any other public comment?
We want to discuss some tax issues.
I'm sorry, what?
We want to discuss some tax issues. If you're going to do that, it's impossible.
Well, that's up to you. I'm taking it's still the same tax issues, right? Well, again, the response is still going to be the same. You need to file an appeal, or if you don't like the appeal, then you need to file with the court.
We did that.
We had some favorable from Senator Mooters, but she had seconded her to the laws surrounding the relationship with them, I believe, so he wants to share that with you.
Okay. We'll pass it on to our solicitor and have him review it and get back. Any other public comment? Yes, sir.
I see that you have a proclamation for April being Environmental Awareness Month. Have you done that before, or is this the first time you're doing that one?
I'd have to check. We get these all the time. I think this is, I think we have done this one before.
I wanted to ask in relation to environmental awareness, I heard there might be some kind of incinerator coming into the industrial block where, you know, off 81, that whole industrial section in Gibson, whatever that is. Do you know anything about it? Can you tell us anything about it?
Nothing, as far as we know, there's not going on right now.
Nothing going on? And I'd like to know, as far as environmental awareness, that I wanted to let everybody know that the water contamination case in Dimick, you might have heard about it, the two families that have been fighting to be heard for six years or so, finally went to federal court, and they were awarded millions by a jury that basically didn't know anything, and they were specifically chosen. I was there for the, you know, 10 days or so. They were specifically chosen to not know anything about the gas industry, and they were not from fracked counties. And they awarded the families and agreed that they were somehow, there was negligence by Cabot Oil and Gas in building those wells near their homes. And so that they have now been vindicated, that they have been impacted and received a lot of nuisance in their situation, besides, of course, the other families who have, you know, more than a dozen in that area who have taken settlements over the years and non-disclosures and gag orders. So, I wanted to say that, that for the county, we have finally gotten some kind of a win for the environmental issues that we have been suffering through since 2008 because of all the gas companies in our area, and Cabot being the number one DEP violator in the whole state. We have 10 companies with the highest violations. Cabot is number one, and they're operating in our county, and they have 618-plus just in our county. So, I wanted everybody to know that, what we are going through, and that people have to go to court. It takes years, federal court, and of course, it's going to be appealed by Cabot, and that'll take who knows how much more time. But we would like to have more awareness about what's going on in this county with all the water contamination and air contamination, because we now have 45 gas compressor stations in our county. And I have not heard from any of our officials. We write to them, besides yourselves, no one has protested the gas development and impacts to our air and water.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Motion to adjourn. Second? Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Arnold, adjourn the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Before you move your side.